I'd like to call meeting the orders. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee LaHa?
Present.
Trustee Pazmino?
Present.
Trustee Fielko?
Present.
Trustee Rinders?
Present.
Mayor Yucich?
Present.
Trustee Rogers and Trustee Consolino are not present at this time.
Okay. We go to the revision and discussion of residential plan. The Towns of Cedar Glen for the development of the subject property, which is approximately 50 acres in size and is located at 14500 West 159th Street.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I could just do a brief introduction, some background before handing it over to the planner developer. So Moises Kukerman with ILM Homes came to Village recently with a concept for a new residential subdivision immediately west of Glenview Walk Estates. And I know I had a conversation with each of the trustees regarding the concept. But in conversations with the developer, we wanted to set up a meeting to get some feedback on the concept before the developer went ahead and submitted formally. We haven't had a subdivision approved in the village for some time, so we want to make sure to have an open dialogue with the developer, the village board, and we also invited the HOA and other taxing districts to voice any concerns or ask any questions that they have at this time. Now, this is just the first step. If the developer wants to proceed, there will be the formal submittal process and the plan commission, public hearing process, and village board approval. So this is just a concept plan review. I don't think we've done this for a long time, but this is just, gives the opportunity for the board to review the idea and ask any questions with developer to see, to make sure it fits with the vision for Homer Glen. So with that, I will hand it over to Jeff Torrens with Dixon Design Studios. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeff Torrens with Dixon Design Studio representing Moses Kukerman, President of ILM Homes. We'd like to thank you for coming out, for starters, and for calling this special meeting. Can everybody hear me okay? I can probably take this off for a bit. Yeah. Thank you. We're here to discuss a potential new community. We're excited about the opportunity to bring this to Homer Glen and hopefully expand the stock housing available in this area. As you mentioned, the project site is north of 159th Street and east of South Cedar Road. It's about 50 acres in size, and it's surrounded by Carriage Walk Estates to the east, agricultural land to the west and north in the county, and on the south side, Denof, I'm sorry, Denofo's Banquets on the opposite side of 159th. Some key points here while we're on this slide is that Glenview Walk Estates uses Hiller Drive for access. The access was planned to also provide access to the subject property by way of a shared right-of-way along the east boundary line. Recent 159th Street improvements include an eastbound left turn lane, providing another opportunity for another full access point on the west side of the property. A third access point is proposed midway between full access points to the east and west into the commercial property. That would be a right-in, right-out only. Onto the concept plan itself. Concept plan has three land use components: commercial, public park, and residential uses. The commercial site, or the commercial component continues the commercial frontage along 159th Street corridor by providing approximately nine and a half acres at a parcel depth of about 340 feet. Zoning will remain consistent with what it is now, C3 commercial, and the commercial property is expected to provide approximately seven and a half, or seven acres of usable land area and its own detention on-site. The second component is the park site. From what I understand, the village has requested public park land that can be easily accessed and used by anybody in the community. Our plan provides a park site of over three acres in an accessible location right at its main entrance off of Hiller Drive. Park site and the detention areas combine along the east side of the property to create a significant continuous open space of nearly 10 acres adjacent to the single-family homes of Glenview Walk Estates. The residential portion of the site expands the village's diversity of housing stock by providing 44 attached single-family homes, those would be duplexes or two-family homes, located on the east side of the property to provide a transition from the existing single-family and Carriage Walk to the three- and four-unit townhome buildings. There are 170 of those units on the long and west and central sides of the property. This would be a public street system with simple winding roads. The middle of the community has been designed with a street featuring a central neighborhood commons and a landscape feature and a trail system that encourages walkability by connecting residents down to the park site. Paired townhomes along the south property line means nobody is looking out the back of their windows at the adjacent commercial property. This area will also feature an evergreen landscape buffer and most likely a privacy Key points here. In order to gain the density, we need to make this property work. We need some flexibility and acceptance of the design standards that will be necessary to help us create the best possible plan. Standards we have used are listed on the plan and may vary from the municipal code. These standards are consistent with successful projects in other subdivisions and other suburban Being able to use these reduced design standards allows us to free up the plan a little bit, improve connectivity by providing a trail link to the park, and provide curvilinear streets to escape the grid of a more urban development. It also allows us to provide community landscape features and passive recreation opportunities. We'd like to address potential concerns about separations to the existing single-family homes to the east. This slide shows some approximate distances between buildings and the property line and building-to-building relationships. For reference, a football field is 160 feet by 360 feet, which would mean that on the south, behind buildings one through five, you could fit a football field, including its end zones, lengthwise across that space. As you go further north and you get up to ground building eight, wherever closest, you can take that same football field and turn it sideways and still fit it in there. That gives you a little sense of scale on what the separations are. One of our key elements that we need in order to allow the wiggle in the road and so forth is that we need to reduce the right-of-way from the standard 66 required by the village to 60 feet. But please note that the rest of the roadway and sidewalks would be constructed to village standards within that 60-foot right-of-way, and the only reduction would be in the parkways, which would go down to eight feet six inches on either side. Here are some architectural examples. We don't have specific product developed yet for the site yet, but this kind of shows the character of the architecture that we'd be shooting for. Note that none of these buildings would be more than four units. There are some six unit buildings represented here and here as well. One question that I always get in these meetings is that people want to know what naturalized detention looks like. So we've provided a couple of slides here illustrating, beauty is kind of in the eye of the beholder. I think that the naturalized open spaces look very nice. They also provide a function, are more environmentally friendly, they slow and filter runoff and provide habitat for wildlife. They also result typically in lower maintenance calls, maintenance costs rather, because of the lack of mowing and care. Typically, basins like this only require care a couple of times a year, where you go in and you clean them up and you weed out the invasives to let the flora shine through. That pretty much concludes our walkthrough here at this time. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to address those.
I have a question for you. You have a Cedar Glen really across the street from you. You going to keep Towns of Cedar Glen? Because on the other side of Cedar is Cedar Glen. I don't know if anyone caught that yet.
About the name? I was unaware of that, but we will take that under consideration. We're not completely attached to the Towns of Cedar Glen at this time. It's a name.
Well, I think it would be confusing though if you had on each side other determine, but you take a look at that and you decide what you want to do on it, and we'll figure that out. Anyone else on the board have anything they would like to ask on it?
I had a question. How are you? Thanks for coming in. On the first entrance, if you're headed west on 159th Street, it looks like, kind of like that dividing entrance between Glenview Walks and this proposed subdivision, it looks kind of like they're right on top of each other, except for that little strip of, looks like grass or something.
The way I understand it, the right-of-way in that area has already been dedicated and the pavement built, so that that's a full functioning boulevard entrance that straddles the property line.
So one could possibly by accident go into one instead of the other one if they weren't looking correctly or, I mean, I guess I have to picture it.
Yeah.
How wide does that go across that hole?
I believe the right-of-way is 80 feet wide. At that location. Thank you. 40 feet on either side?
Okay.
Like, do you know if there's any accidents there or people turning in on other lanes at all?
It's like a boulevard, there's landscaping in the middle.
On the middle?
Then we could also have, you're talking about dead center where you've got the, just so you lean on the same page. We also have problems here, and we could have a problem here with houses.
There's some of the things that are in here that, I mean, I like the concept, but you've got two islands that I don't know in the middle of winter whether we're going to push that snow, because no matter how you do it, you're going to be pushing it up on someone's house, and you're going to probably fill the openings where the parking can be between it. The one on the east side, you're not giving too much room at all for a truck to be able to go around that circle, because there too, if they start pulling it, they're going to fill up those houses with snow. You're going to have some angry people. We might have to work on that or...
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Thanks for inviting us. My name is Moses Kukerman. I am the home builder. This is a concept plan, and as we move along the process and we start engineering the site, we will find issues that we need to resolve. And so, for instance, that entrance boulevard, it's an 80-foot right-of-way. It has to be treated like any other two-way street. People need to know that if they want to go right in, they need to know that as they turn right, they are on the right side of the road. When they leave, they're going to be on the other side of the road. And as far as snow storage and things of the nature, as we move along the process, if we are, you know, able to move it along, we will address all those issues at the appropriate time. This is just a concept plan.
Yeah, these are just suggestions right now, too.
Of course.
Because you're looking at preliminary, so.
Yes.
We want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
I also have a question about the villas. The way it looks here that there is no brick on any of these villas?
No, that's not the case. This is, we did not, at this point, I wasn't really willing, if you will, to spend the necessary money to prepare site-specific architectural designs. But I received comments of these designs from staff about four or five or six months ago, and they required, they made certain suggestions that we will be very willing to adopt. So they will be masonry, absolutely.
Okay. And as far as the townhomes go, there is four, actually, you're talking four units, four individual units together?
Three and four.
Three and four?
Three and four. If you look at the site plan closely, some of the buildings, some of the assemblies, or assemblies rather, I'm sorry, have, some of them have three units in one building, some of them have four. The duplexes to the east side of the property, they have only two units per building. Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to address the individual units as well. I noticed that when I was reading through that you have some end units that are designated with the master bedrooms on the first floor. I'd like to talk about accessibility for these units and what the plan is for that.
Okay. From the very beginning, we, or I was told by staff that the village is looking at having some of the units with principal bedrooms on the ground floor, and I am very willing to do that. There certainly could be a market. I'm not sure that there is one, but probably there could be one. So what I indicated to staff at that time is that each and every one of those duplexes will have the ability to have the principal bedroom on the ground floor, but I will not be willing, to be quite honest with you, to restrict it all to have the principal bedrooms on the ground floor. What this means is that at the time of marketing, we're going to offer these units with two plans, one with all, with, actually, maybe even three. Correct me if I'm wrong if we don't have the room for that. First of all, one of them could be a rancher. In other words, all the bedrooms are on the ground floor. Some of them could be what I call a Cape Cod, where the principal bedroom is on the ground floor, and the additional, one or two additional bedrooms are on the second floor. And then there will be some that, depending on what the market wants to buy, in which the three bedrooms will be on the second floor. And the same applies to all the end units in the townhouses. All those units will show essentially two plans. I mean, there will be more than two, but just for you to understand what the concept that I have, we will be able to offer them with principal bedrooms on the ground floor, and the market will decide what they want to buy. But I want to have a clear understanding with the village that I will offer them, but especially in the case of the duplexes, I will not be willing to restrict the sale of those units only with principal bedrooms on the ground floor, because I want the market to decide what they want to buy. If there's a market and everybody wants to buy all the units with principal bedrooms on the ground floor, everybody's happy.
Right. I kind of have a problem with that. I think when we're talking about senior accessibility or people that use wheelchairs, we want to make sure they have options here in Homer Glen.
I understand that. And so, we can, when we design those floor plans with the principal bedroom on the ground floor, we will make sure that they comply with all those rules. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Another thing, a question I have is about the 350-foot setback. I mean, our ordinance is called for 600 feet, and if this is a mixed-use property, what would be your plans for the 350 feet of commercial?
That's the tops of the commercial, 350 feet. Okay. I know your plans go for 600 feet. From the very beginning, when I learned of that requirement, I expressed my concerns about the amount of commercial. Commercial development or retail development, as you know, hasn't been too easy to accomplish or to develop in these past few years for many reasons. With regard to, so my decision has been that I will offer commercial, but I want to limit it because I don't think it's too viable, which yields me, it's a good segue to the second, to this answer to your second question, which is, what will go there, I don't know. As I expressed my opinions to staff on multiple occasions, I will stage the property for development. It's going to have utilities and detention, and I hope and pray that I can do something with it the next day. But it may take a year, it may take five years, or it may take longer. I don't know. And I want you to also know that I am not a commercial developer, so my intent would be to sell that property unless I can find a bill to suit or a ground lease. So that is, quite frankly, my answer. I don't know what will happen with that property. I do have some ideas, but I have no way of telling you that they can come to fruition.
Well, I just don't want 159th Street to be 159th Street of strip malls or small centers. You know, if we allow the 350 feet, that pretty much limits whatever can really go there.
Well, certainly that limits what can go there, and that's the rationale that perhaps should be applied. I don't think a strip center can go there. I'm not sure. I am not a retail developer. I have to find counsel for that, advice.
Yeah. All I'm saying is that it's going to limit, it's going to limit what is going to be able to go on.
Yes, it certainly will.
350-foot setback.
Certainly will.
Yeah.
In addition to that, with the 350-foot buffer instead of 600, that also brings those townhouses closer to 159th, which means they're closer to the noise. It's like an expressway with trucks going back and forth there. My concern a little bit for this type of development is your buffer. As soon as commercial properties go in there, obviously, we can say the buyer can use due diligence, see 159th Street, see that there's possibly commercial property there, but once those units are sold and then commercial comes in afterwards, the homeowner kind of looks like it, I was here first, and now you have this commercial property that's bringing in noise, delivery trucks, whatever may bring with commercial property, depending on who goes in there. So with 600 feet that it's supposed to be, would put it farther away from the noise from 159th Street, but like what trustee says, I do not think that that is far enough. But if you could tell me, I see your setback is 40 feet. Now, when you're saying 40 feet, you're talking 40 feet from the southern edge of those buildings?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so 40 feet. And now you, I don't know how thick that's going to be with your buffer between commercial and the residents that will be purchasing these, but do you have in your covenants any type of, not a warning, but something that you would have those people that close to commercial signing onto with the understanding that in the future, there's going to be commercial?
Absolutely.
You do?
There will be, there will be in two places, in the purchase and sale agreement of the units, and also in the subdivision, there will be a warning.
So can you tell me which one, which units, number-wise, would fall in that category? And then from there, which ones would not?
All those, I can't see the numbers here, but all those units that are perpendicular to the commercial.
So does that include one and two?
Yes. That includes all those.
The one through eight?
All six buildings. I can't see the numbers from here, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, you can just count them up. One, two, three. There's eight of them, so all eight on the southern.
Do you have a copy of that here? Here. Okay. Buildings, the buildings that will have that caveat, as you call it, would be buildings three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Not one and two?
Yeah. Okay. We can, maybe building one. Building two, we don't need it. And let me address a little bit the noise from the highway.
Have you canvassed the neighbors to the east of you at all? Have they been involved in the process at all?
No, that's why we call for this building to get their input and their opinion.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I also want to make note here that we have a letter from Mr. Bricker, Deputy Chief for the Homer Township Fire Department. Have you seen that?
Yes.
Is the three requests that he, okay. I just want to say them so everyone knows what they are. His first request is that both entrances off 159th Street into the residential area shall be accessible at the beginning of this project.
Not a problem.
Number two, all units shall be protected with the NFPA 13D suppression systems.
Not an issue.
Perfect. And we will review items such as hydrant locations and street width when complete plans are submitted.
Okay. That's not an issue, but I made it very clear this afternoon in an email to all interested parties that part of my plan is to have a 60-foot right-of-way without the pavement width being any different than if it were a 66-foot right-of-way. And I understand from conversations I had many months ago with Mr. Gaddy, who has since apparently left the village, that that is a permissible variance in the village of Homer Glen to have a reduced right-of-way. But once again, the width of the pavement is not changing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? All set?
That's all for me, thank you.
I'm sorry, Dan, what did you say?
I said, "That's all for me, thank you."
Well, we've got the questions that we have right now, and I understand that when you go to build this, things do change, so board's got to, this is discussion only tonight, so. Well, yeah, I think that if everyone's got their questions right now, we can go over these a little bit more and we can get back together.
Mayor, may I just ask one question for clarification on something, if you don't mind? Because we did have a couple of residents call me regarding the other project that's by Home Depot. Where the commercial parcels are on this plan, what happens if you can't sell it as commercial? Do you have a Plan B?
No, because the village has been very clear that they will be demanding the commercial.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any people that live over in Glenview that have any questions?
With public comments?
There's a number that have signed in for public comments. Are we going to do it on public comment? Okay. All right. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Kara?
Sure.
Marty?
Okay. Nope.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Kara Maud. I am not a resident of Glenview Walk. I'm actually a resident of Cedar Glen. Cedar Glen is the subdivision that you spoke of, north of 159th Street, west of Cedar. So I'm here tonight just to represent my family. I was born in 1972. My parents began in Homer Glen in 1969 on Bell Road and 159th, across from Bell Side Seven. Upon having children, my parents moved into Aaron Hills subdivision off of Parker Road. And now even today, my husband grew up at 151st and Will Cook Road. His parents developed on their own, all one-acre sites. I myself, if you know the subdivision that I'm living in, Cedar Glen, all one-acre plus lots. My parents in Aaron Hills, huge, 170-foot deep, 90 feet width, front lots. Okay? The density of this subdivision is not even... The density of this subdivision is not even to be considered, okay? I mean, look at our situation with the high school. Are we aware of the density in all of our elementary schools? And we want to allow or consider, I'm sorry, this is just a, you know, a presentation, that, you know, we want to narrow streets when, you know, vehicles are getting bigger. Everybody around here, we all have kids, we got SUVs, we're running around, and we're going to narrow the streets by six feet? Allow that variance or consider? I would just like everyone to take their step back. I don't know where each and every one of you lives. I've let you know where my family lives, where we have lived. I left, I went to Lockport. I went really far, right? And then I came back to raise my family here in Homer Glen. I was born and raised here. This is not what Homer Glen should be intending on doing to our agricultural. I mean, I see it's still zoned A1. I'm all for commercial business. My house backs up to Dahl Landscaping. You know, he does the best that he can to stay quiet in the mornings, on the weekends. What an incredible guy. I support all of our Homer Glen businesses. I do see a need for more commercial depth.
You do have 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm not opposed to any of this, you know, development as far as, you know, more homes, but I think we should really take a survey of what's around. And this type of thing is where, you know, Lockport was headed, and we don't need this. Thank you. That's all I really had to say.
Thanks, Karen. Next would be Jeff Tarns.
That was me.
That you, okay. Moises is the same thing. Marty Pavlik?
Thanks. Marty Pavlik, I'm a resident of Glenview Rock Estates. Just want to start off by saying thank you for letting me speak today. Glenview Rock Estates was, started in 2005, and obviously in 2008, the recession happened. We had a tough time filling out the rest of Glenview Rock Estates. And, you know, it showed to me how important development is to not only the community overall, but to your neighbors. And we worked really hard as a community to help builders come into our subdivision. The village worked with us to get a beautiful park built, which really enhanced the traction to our community. And happy to say, we really only have 10 lots left. And the park was a big impact on getting those remaining lots sold. We didn't ask for any lower standards in our subdivision to get houses built. We worked with the current standards. But when I look at that land outside my window, I realize one day something will most likely be built there. Next year, maybe five years. But I've always thought that that land was so precious because the vision of that land, always what I've heard was either a high school or potentially some sports complex that would be connected to this village hall, and it would really be a downtown and bring the entire Homer Glen village together. Granted, I understand there's a lot of debate on what's going to happen, what won't happen, but I think by approving something like this, you're missing out on a much larger grand vision, and it would be a huge opportunity lost. And I just want to say, I think we should be looking for developers that want to raise the standards of Homer Glen, not ask for them to be lowered. Thank you.
It's Kanaser.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I haven't mentioned my name. I'm John Kanaser. I'm a president of Glenview Rock Estates. I'm also a board member on our board the last two or three years. I came to Illinois when I was three years old, lived in Homer Glen. When I was old enough to buy my first place, I bought a home just like what's being proposed here in Lockport. Nice community, I had great neighbors. In the 10 years I lived there, constant rotation of neighbors. And my wife and I wanted to build a home to raise our family for the next 30-plus years, and we chose Glenview Rock, and we built there two years ago. So we have a lot of residents that are here, a lot that couldn't make it, that wanted me to convey their opinion and thoughts. Overall, I'd say there's a lot of concerns or utmost oppose to the development. To Marty's point, we don't know what's going to go in there. Personally, I'd rather see residential than a bunch of warehouses. So, you know, there's some pros and cons. The first concern, I think, is some folks that mentioned is the density. We have 70 properties in Glenview Rock Estates, so if you assume there's four people per property, and many homes have more homes, people than that, some have even less, you're talking about 300 people. This complex, assuming two or three people, you're talking another 300 to 400 people. So the density is a concern. The price point's a concern because this is going to be bringing folks like I came from, you know, entry-level homes that are going to have kids, overpopulating the schools. In addition to that, another major concern of our association is the entrance. It is a boulevard. It is, I would say, very safe to go in and out. There is a, there is a street light there, a street light, not a stoplight, that gives some light there. So we haven't, to my knowledge, have any major issues there. But that would be one of our major concerns is adding this much density plus our current neighborhood. And even though we only have 70 properties, people are in and out of our neighborhood constantly. We're even adding a security camera because of all the ins and outs of residents and, you know, vendors and so forth. So if the board was to approve this, our first question is, I would dead hope there's going to be a stoplight there on 159th and Hiller. And the same token is if, or I ask if the board is, or if the village board's going to consider this, to have construction going along that west lot to avoid all the commotion. This fall, we were actually planning on updating our landscaping along the boulevard. At this point, I want to hold off on this until I know what's going on with that, which is the other point, is we've been paying to maintain the trees and grass and the landscaping of there. I talked with the village accessory or whatnot. I think we own the inbound lane, but we don't own the outbound lane, which is a bit confusing. So I would ask if this did get approved, there would be some sort of compensation or assistance in maintaining that property. What else? Also, the park, as Marty mentioned, has been a great for our community. It's brought more residents. When I moved two years ago, we had 20 open lots. We only have half of that now. And a lot of the residents that are currently under construction are the ones that sent emails and have voiced the biggest opinions. They're not even residents, they're not even long-term residents of Glenview Rock. They're like, they're spending anywhere between $6 and $1 million on their home, and they're really concerned about this. So anyhow, so I'm glad to see, I like the green development, I like the open space, the park, although park was the other thing, is we wouldn't want an overpopulation of everyone attending our park. We do have a lot of visitors that come in, but if they were to move forward, we'd like to see the playground or whatever's going to go in that park area kind of established prior or at the early stage of development versus everything done after the fact.
You do have 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
That's all I have to say. I'm hoping that the village board really considers all the things here, as there are a lot of opinions of the residents of Glenview Rock.
I don't normally ask a question when it's public comment time, but I do have two.
Sure.
So if you don't mind. You are the association president, correct?
Currently, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
John Kanaser.
John, thank you for coming out and speaking. What I would like to know is, you have commercial property equal to 350 feet in front of your subdivision also. Is there any talks as to what anybody's doing with that property at the moment?
To my knowledge, I heard rumors that Loyola owned it. When I was going through the village records this week to prepare for this meeting, I think Silver Cross owns it. So I'm suspecting, and actually had a resident ask me about that exact question this morning in an email, I'm suspecting some sort of medical building will eventually go there. I don't know, but.
So as of right now, there's nothing that's on paper?
There's currently a big poll.
The other thing I wanted to ask you, what is the average price of a home in your subdivision?
I would say about $700,000 or more. I mean, I'm at 800. I know the one home that's going in, there's over a million. One just got listed for 900 last week. There are some homes in there in the mid-fives, but the lowest I've seen in this time has been 550.
Right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, next would be Jim Marth. You're going to have to say the last name, I just can't read this.
Hi, my name is Wally Greska. Thank you for allowing the time here. We actually building a house. We broke ground last week. So we're moving sort of from a kind of a community like this. And as Marty and John, I just want to echo that, I agree 100% what they're saying. It's, you know, Homer Glen is a community that you want to live in. Allowing this, I'm sorry, it's, and again, there's 214 units going in. How is the traffic to pull out? Essentially, it's just one entrance. I mean, to go in and out, it's, I can't envision it, so. But basically, pretty much what was already said is, I just want to comment on, so. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to remember, this is just a discussion, and we are going to be talking about this and looking at the pros and cons. So with that, we're done with public comment. Is there anything that anyone has to ask before we go to adjournment for this part of the meeting?
May I address some of the issues?
Pardon me?
May I address some of the issues to the public?
Well, you're here, let them hear what you have to say.
I'll be very, very brief. One of the comments that I heard tonight from the members of the, from the residents is that the streets are going to be narrow. Let me emphasize that the streets are going to be of the same width than the existing streets in Homer Glen, which is, I believe, 31 feet pavement width? From back of curb to back of curb? Okay. Issue number one. Issue number two, of course, if we were to move this forward, and if we were to be approved, construction, first of all, I think the Department of Public Works or the Fire Department made a comment of that all the access points, the west end and the east end have to be finished before any building permits are issued, something along those lines. So naturally, we're not going to use the Hiller Drive entrance to build, to bring in all the construction work. It would be the other one, the western end of the property. Thirdly, I need to ask this from staff, is Hiller Drive a public street or a private street? I believe it's a public street. Okay. Because the comment was made that Glenview Rock owns the right lane or the right side of the, the right half of the right-of-way that currently exists. So I want to make clear that it's a village-owned road, and we will just build the other half. And, you know, to the comments that the trustee made, if it's necessary, we wouldn't be opposed to add traffic signals. Not a traffic light, but traffic signage that says, you know, make a right turn. You know what I'm, I think, I think you understand what I'm saying. We will do everything possible to avoid a confusion so that nobody goes into our development or Glenview Rock using the opposite lane. Basically, and in connection with overpopulation of schools, we, if we build this, we're going to be paying an impact fee to the schools. And at the appropriate time, if we move this forward, we will offer to the village a fiscal impact study that will show the tax revenues to the village, the tax revenues to the school, the tax revenues to the public, the park department, et cetera, and the expenses to those taxing entities. And then it will be, it will show a balance, if it's positive or negative. Lastly, I want to make mention of the park that we're going to create. I was told by staff, and I have agreed to equip the park. What remains to be seen is how much equipment we place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Moises. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, save it. This part of the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We will have, we will give an opportunity for everyone to talk on this again. Let's just let the board see how they feel.